So, welcome to our guests. It's nice to see faces in the audience. Dread, it's nice to see all the council members, too. This is the first time since March the 10th of last year that we've all been together, so, great. Mr. Parker, good to see you in person? Great. Let's go ahead and start with the roll call. Judy, if you would do the roll call.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Steve Bremner.
Here.
Natalie Johnson. Here. Julie Wolfe. John Shada. Judith Chandler.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Nancy Fortune.
Present.
And Mayor John Graham.
Present, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, first item of business is to the approval of the agenda. I believe all members of council have had a chance to review the agenda, so if there are no objections, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve the agenda as written. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Still nice to see you raise your hands. It's, uh, thank you much. I'm a little disordered. I'm looking at the screen, so, we'll get through this. Great, so next item is public comment on non-agenda items. This is a time when any member of the audience can address council briefly. We request that you hold your comments to three minutes or less. Try not to repeat a prior speaker if that happens, if someone shares the same thought as you. We will need to have your name and address when you approach the, uh, when you come up to the microphone. And also, we request that you fill out a form and give it to our city clerk so that we can get ahold of you if necessary. Great. And typically, we don't respond to comments at this time, but please, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak at this time? Doctor, Doctor Nate?
I'm Dr. Nathan Brightwell, President of the Pike Peak Range Riders, and I'd like to take five minutes and give you a brief summary of the Range Riders and our relationship to the Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo.
If you could keep it to three, we'd appreciate it, but we're all ears.
I'll have to hurry. May I take the mask off while speaking? I have my COVID immunization, and as a physician, I don't know of any transmission of COVID from a fully immunized person to someone else. My second shot was in January, so I'm well past the two-week mark.
If council has no objections?
If any objections, I will keep it on.
Hearing no objections, I think it's, go ahead.
I will happily remove the mask. Thank you. The Pike Speaker Range Riders, and I will try to hurry through this, was formed in 1949 by Ken Brookhart, a lumber dealer who subsequently started the Brookhart Lumber Company. Perhaps some of you remember the Brookhart Lumber Company. And Everett Conover, a family member of Conover Motors. And they formed a group, the Range Riders, to promote the Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo. Our organization has grown from original 39 members to more than 200 today, and is made up of a large cross-section of our community, including cowboys, farmers, ranchers, policemen, firemen, merchants, lawyers, doctors, dentists, brokers, accountants, various craftsmen, elders, realtors, salesmen, military people, business owners, developers, electricians, plumbers, city council leaders, and a state congressman. The Range Rider Memorial is a larger-than-life bronze statue located at the southeast corner of Cascade Avenue and Pike Peak Avenue in downtown Colorado Springs. This is adjacent to the original Fountain Colony marker, which became Colorado Springs. The statue depicts Ken Brookhart on the mule and Everett Conover on a horse. Names of our deceased Range Riders in the year they passed is etched in granite around the perimeter of the memorial. The mission of the Pike Peak Range Riders is threefold. One, promote and support the Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo. Two, support the Pike Peak Range Rider Foundation. And three, preserve and carry on our Western heritage. The net proceeds from the annual Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo, which this year will be July the 14th through the 17th, and the Street Breakfast, which will be one month earlier, June 16th, which is the kickoff of our annual five-day range ride typically around Pike Peak, and this year will be riding on the south side of Pike Peak. The proceeds provide a wide range of services to military families, to all branches of the military stationed in the Pike Peak region. The Colorado Springs Western Street Breakfast draws thousands of people to our early breakfast prepared by our military commissary volunteer personnel. The Pike Peak Range Rider Foundation, which I mentioned, is the home of the Pike Peak Range Riders and operates a large equestrian indoor and outdoor facility called Latigo, located north of Falcon on Hallelujah Trail in the community of Albert, Colorado. Latigo houses Stable Strides Therapeutic Riding Center, the Range Rider Museum, and stages year-round events, including various youth groups such as 4H, Little Bridges Rodeo, Rodeo Bible Camps, the Winter Buckle Series Award for horsemanship, and various other year-round equestrian events for youth, young people, horsemen, and horsewomen. The Pike Peak Rangerettes is an elite equestrian drill team made up of young ladies between the ages of 12 and 20 who are full of class and finesse. They have performed in the Pike Peak or Bus Rodeo since 1957, as well as various other events around the state. To be a Rangerette, each prospective rider must meet specific standards regarding character, morals, a desire to participate in precision groups, horsemanship, and be involved in extracurricular school activities. The Pike's Peak Range Rider Pivots is also an equestrian precision drill group composed of Range Rider members formed in 1954 to support military families in the Pike's Peak region. It performs throughout Colorado, Texas, and neighboring states, most recently in Lake Havasu, Arizona, again, to promote the Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo. They have performed annually in the Grand Entry, and year after year, the fans are drawn to the captivating routine, speed, and excitement of the Range Rider Pivots. Two other functions that we support are the Pike's Peak Special Rodeo, which is a rodeo whose participants are drawn from the Stable Strides Therapeutic Riding Center and Colorado Springs Therapeutic Riding Center. This special rodeo is tied to the Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo each year. The Pike's Peak Posse is a group of men and women from all walks of life in the Pike Peak region who raise money each year to support the 4H Club and help them market and sell their livestock at the annual Colorado State Fair. Thank you. I also would like to then now introduce Corliss Palmer, and she will tell you a little bit about the Girl of the West.
Thank you, Doctor.
My name's Corliss Palmer. I live in Falcon. Do you need to know my address?
If you'd give us your street address, please.
8015 Mallard Drive in Falcon, or Payton, 80831.
Thank you.
Sure. Thanks for having us today. My name's Corliss Palmer, and I am a 20-year volunteer for the Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo as Director of the Girl of the West Program. As such, I schedule and escort the Girls of the West over 150 appearances each summer to promote the Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo. The Girl of the West story began in 1922 and is about two young rodeo ambassadors and how they promote the Western way of life and the Western-type American girl at our Pike Speaker Bus, rodeo, and other events. The Girl of the West is a two-summer program. She serves as aide one summer and then Girl of the West. The aide is selected from a competition comprised of horsemanship, speech, interview, and appearance, and that will happen on July 16th this year during our rodeo. Georgia Stremennis is the 2021... The 2021 Girl of the West is the 19-year-old daughter of George and Jenny Stremennis of Larkspur. Since the age of 10, she's been involved in the equine world, competing in 4H, Western and English Pleasure, Working Ranch Horse, and Jim Kana. She's also served as ambassador for other Colorado rodeos. She's a recent graduate from Arapaho Community College with a communications degree. She plans on continuing her education at the University of Colorado in Colorado Springs. Her brother is currently serving in the U.S. Army as an airborne ranger. She rides a paint horse named Josie. Here's Georgia Stremennis.
And if you would also give us your full name and address, please.
Of course. Georgia Stremennis. Do you need me to spell anything for you?
I think that'll be okay. Just use the address.
Yeah, my address is 14263 True Mountain Drive, Larkspur, Colorado.
Thank you.
My name is Georgia, and I am the Girl of the West. I serve as the proud ambassador for the Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo, and I have to tell you, I cannot wait for this year's rodeo. The Pike Speaker Bus is a very special rodeo for me and my family. We love all that it stands for: our Western heritage, the sport of rodeo, and especially giving back to the local military and their families. My brother is currently serving, so this is all very near and dear to my heart. I am proud to be a part of this rodeo family and the beautiful community that we live in. I am proud of an event that brings people from all over together to celebrate all that is good about our country, the growing sport of rodeo, and to honor the sacrifice made by those who serve this great nation. So I am more than excited to tell you that Championship Rodeo is coming to town this summer, July 14th through the 17th, at the Norris Penrose Event Center. The Pike Speaker Bus is pro-rodeo at its finest and one of the most beautiful venues there is to enjoy the sport. As a PRCA, pro-tour rodeo, you will see the best athletes competing in the seven events, which include bareback, steer wrestling, team roping, saddle bronc, tie-down roping, barrel racing, and bull riding. There's also fan favorite mutton bustin', where a trophy and a medal are awarded to the winner at each performance, and these trophies are even as tall as some of the kiddos. You won't want to miss our specialty act, professional rodeo entertainer Amanda Payne and her long-horned steer wrangling extravaganza. Tickets for the 80th Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo are on sale now, so buy yours early and online at pikespeakerbus.org to choose the best seats in the house. The rodeo runs Wednesday, July 14th, through Saturday, July 17th, with performances at 7:00 PM Wednesday through Saturday evenings, and a Saturday matinee at 12:30 PM. The Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo is one for the true fan, the first-timer, and everyone in between. There's lots going on before the rodeo, too. The grounds open at 4:00 PM before the evening performances and at 10:00 AM before our Saturday matinee. Come early, avoid the traffic, and enjoy all the family-friendly pre-show fun in our fan zone. There will be mutton bustin' tryouts, mechanical bull riding, pony rides, petting zoo, dance lessons, and you can grab a bite to eat in our feedlot tent. Parking is free. Our local military are honored at each performance: Fort Carson on Wednesday evening, First Responders in Missile Defense on Thursday evening, Space Night on Friday evening, the United States Air Force Academy at the Saturday Matinee, and NORAD US Northcom on Saturday evening. The Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo has proudly been supporting local military and their families since 1946. All of the performances will start with the Pike's Peak Range Rider Pivots and the Pike's Peak Rangerettes Drill Teams, followed by the Fort Carson Mounted Color Guard. Stick around after the rodeo for autographs from the contestants, the Rangerettes, and the Girl of the West. That's me. Then head on over to the Coors Roadhouse Saloon for live music, dancing, and cold Coors. Be sure to wave to me when you see our awesome pink Perkins Ram Truck all over town as I head out to represent the rodeo. Please also plan to join us bright and early on June 16th from 5:30 AM to 9:00 AM for the annual Colorado Springs Western Street Breakfast and the official send-off of the Pike's Peak Range Riders Annual Ride. Enjoy a $5 breakfast prepared and served by active-duty military volunteers. Now you know why I am so passionate about this rodeo and everything that it stands for. So I want to see all of you at this year's rodeo, the 80th Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo, July 14th through the 17th, at the Norris Penrose Event Center in Colorado Springs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce Mike McCoy, who is President of the Rodeo Board, to tell us a little bit more about the rodeo.
Okay, excuse me. Mr. McCoy, I would, we've heard quite a bit on the rodeo and the range ride. If you could keep your remarks relatively brief. We typically request three minutes or less.
It'll be 30 seconds. How's that? I do apologize. I had the time wrong. I apologize.
No, that's okay. Sounds like you're a quick draw artist. Have at it.
Yes, sir. I'm Mike McCoy. I'm President of the 80th Pike Speaker Bus Rodeo, and I know Nate gave you a good background on the Range Riders.
I'm sorry. We need your street addresses, too, Mr. McCoy.
My street address?
Your residential address, yes, sir.
1419 Cycle Heights Apartment 209 Colorado Springs, 80921.
Great, thanks. Okay, back to you.
So, as Nate alluded to, the Range Riders have been around for quite a while, but our rodeo is the second oldest in the city. It was founded in 1937 by Spencer Penrose to, you know, maintain our Western spirit, and since 1946, the money we raise, the majority of it goes back to the military quality-of-life programs. Once we pay our bills, the rest goes back to them. So we're, I'm extremely pleased and honored to be here tonight to say we're going to have a rodeo, and we would love to see you all out here. So, that's about as brief as I can get, and I do apologize. I wanted also, we've got some posters and handouts up here for everyone to take and pass around, and we do appreciate your support.
Great, thank you very much. Well, I wish you the best for a rodeo season and a great ride around the south side of Pike Peak. Great, thank you much. Do we, we'll pause a minute here. If anyone would like to exit the room, that'd be fine. And do we have any other comments, non-agenda item comments?
Can I just make a quick announcement as far as our microphones? So, we are having some volume issues, so it's really important that when you speak into your microphone that it's on. It'll be green, green down here. You want to be about three to four inches, no more than that, away from it. Talk directly into it, so it does adjust. So, with that, I think the public will, since we're streaming this, will be able to hear better. I just wanted to give that quick announcement.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I believe there are no more comments for non-agenda items then, so let's move on to the consent calendar. We have two items on the consent calendar tonight. Approval of the May 18th, 2021 regular meeting minutes. The second item, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation to authorize federal funds for the future phases of the Creek Walk Trail, Phases Four and Five. If no council member has an objection, I would entertain a motion to accept and approve the consent calendar.
I move that we approve the consent calendar as written. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye and raise hands, please.
Aye.
Great. Motion, okay, great. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, on to our presentation for this evening. This is the Emergency Medical Services Agency of the Year Award and EMS Instructor of the Year Award, and for that, we'll have Fire Chief John Forsett. Mr. Forsett, welcome.
Sir, thank you. What's that? You guys can't hear this? No, I'm kidding. I'll do whatever you need. How about that? I feel better about this. So, normally, I don't like to stand in front of a microphone. I like to work the crowd a little bit, so. Um, so, yeah, in general, you saw the memorandum I put in your packet, and thanks for not having anything to yell at me about this time. I hopefully did well. Generally speaking, I like to maintain a very humble environment over at the Fire Department. To some extent, that's probably not a good thing, at least externally, but I don't want myself or our folks to be boastful. But, that aside, I think we're an amazing group of folks, and tonight, I'm here to share a little bit about that with you. And I want to share a quick story, too. Just before we came in tonight, within the last hour, our folks went on a call down at the east end of town, and they were working on a young lady who they were having some communications problem with, which happens on a daily basis with us. But, turned out in this case, that individual happened to be a deaf-mute. After some time of them working with her, they figured that out. The most amazing thing to me is how diverse our group is, because two of these folks back here, no sign language. Amazing to me. I mean, our diverse group is amazing. So, anyway, that being said, we're going to see a couple things tonight. First, we're going to see Ashley cry, maybe even me a little bit, because I happen to tend to do that. But all those folks that are back there in the back, they're part of her EMT class, and I'm sure they're here right now, because maybe their scores will go up just a touch if they're over here to support Ashley. So, do say hello to some of my folks back there. Some of these folks are Manitou firefighters. One of the things you'll hear me mention tonight is how we support other agencies, especially Ashley. We have folks here in our EMT class now from Manitou Springs, obviously, search and rescue, Floriscent, 11 Mile, who am I missing? Lake George, Crystal Park, Cascade. So, you can see what a huge, huge regional impact we have on folks. So, very proud of us, very proud of us. So, this will be the one time I'm boastful for a while, okay? We were nominated for two awards. One award was EMS Agency of the Year and Mayor, and Judy saw the, our presentation at our May meeting awards dinner. The Pike's, it's the Plains to Peak Regional Emergency Medical and Trauma Services Advisory Committee. There's 11 of those in the state of Colorado, and they're made up of about five member counties per each region. And our particular region is made up of about 30 agencies just in El Paso County, not counting the other four counties that are part of our region. So, in that, those 30 agencies, they include Colorado Springs and search and rescue and some medical, like, clinics, things like that. So, they're all under this advisory committee, and what's really, really neat is amongst these five counties, we were nominated for EMS Agency of the Year and EMS Educator of the Year. So, we got a couple different nominations for each of those, and then after their process, we did receive the award for both of those as being the best agency and educator of the year. We now also will be included in a state award for those same categories, so I look forward to seeing how that turns out. But if it's okay with you, aside from what I put in your packet, I'd just like to read just a portion of each of those specifically from our medical direction, and so you can kind of get a feel for why they did this for us. So, leaving out some other paragraphs, Manitou Springs is a leading ALS non-transport agency in El Paso County. This department has always upheld the highest standards to EMS care to their community while supporting multiple other surrounding communities. This department has a robust paid and volunteer EMS hybrid team, of which has continued to grow exponentially in spite of the nationwide decrease in volunteerism. This speaks to the high quality of commitment of this agency, not only to the community, but also to the EMS clinicians. Manitou Springs Fire Department has always strived to assure exceptional educational opportunities to their EMS clinicians, as well as surround the communities. Manitou Springs Fire Department hosts educational jointly with El Paso County Search and Rescue, Crystal Park, and many other agencies. In addition to this, department also hosts initial EMT education to members of their and other EMS departments in order to train EMS clinicians throughout the region. This training has led to new providers throughout El Paso and Teller Counties. Most amazingly, Manitou Springs Fire Department does this at no charge to any of the students or fees for this training, even from other departments. In addition to this, Manitou Springs Fire Department has consistently worked collaborative with surrounding agencies to support areas with less ability to respond to calls. They have worked with El Paso County Search and Rescue to cover the incline and other high-volume response areas, Cascade Fire to provide coverage to U-Pass and Crystal Park with automatic mutual aid response. Manitou Springs has recently continued to advance care in their community as one of four agencies involved in Telehealth Pilot Program that brings board-certified emergency medicine physicians to the patient's home for those who do not wish to be transported to the emergency room. This is ever so critical in the COVID-19 pandemic with patients afraid to seek medical care. In addition, Manitou Springs Fire Department has been committed to exceptional patient care through novel continuous quality improvement with involvement in both regional paid agency and telehealth quality management communities. And it had preface, and it has more to come. But that's, was one of the nominations that we got for EMS Agency of the Year. Ashley, would you come up, please? She's a rock star. She's truly a rock star. You want to do this for me? I'll tell you what, I chose the easy one of these, because they're both really heartfelt. I mean, Ashley does a wonderful job for us, and I wish I could teach her, and I am, I'm working very hard at it, to say no. She just does not say no to anything at all, especially EMS, at all. So, rather than read the doctor's nomination, I'll read this from one of her coworkers, basically, in the, in the UC health system. So, again, leaving out a couple paragraphs, Ashley has been the backbone of education for Manitou Springs Fire Department, paid and volunteer providers. She has worked tirelessly to create and locate education unique and applicable to the Manitou Springs community and EMS. Ashley Wardell has displayed a dedication and commitment to ensure excellence in her teaching and compassion to providers in her agency and those in surrounding EMS community. Ashley has successfully developed an education program that thrives for the unique situations of supporting the education of Manitou Springs paid providers and the Manitou Springs and Crystal Park EMS volunteers. Ashley Wardell exemplifies the compassion, dedication, and values needed to develop and maintain the EMS education in their unusual situation. Additionally, Ashley saw a need to provide initial EMS education within her agency with the limited funds they had available for the volunteers. She took this challenge on, has been, and has been providing free EMT classes for new volunteers for the past several years. Her vision expanded to outside of her agency. She now offers the initial EMT classes for free to agencies with limited funding, allowing rural agencies to broaden the EMS care available to their communities. Her dedication to EMS has allowed numerous clinicians to expand their knowledge and abilities to the level of EMT that would have otherwise been unable. These EMT classes have benefited agencies in El Paso, Teller, Douglas, and Park Counties. Ashley Wardell has developed a peer support group for EMS, seeing the need that was lacking in the EMS community. She supported other agencies to build their own and has been available to EMS providers when they were in need. Ashley saw the need to expand during the COVID-19 with increasing burden that EMS providers were experiencing. She put together the Teller County Peer Support Team to bring together agencies from Cripple Creek to Manitou Springs with additional support from Dr. Crampton and Dr. Long to ensure that EMS members had the help they needed in these unprecedented times. In the years that I've known Ashley, she has always been an example of supporting others and not letting her fellow college, or colleagues struggle along. So, I present with you, Ashley, I wanted to share that information with you. She's a wonderful, wonderful human being. So, thank you very much. I just wanted to share that with you. I also kind of got forced to share that with you.
Chief, can you stay at the podium for just a second? And thank you very much for both you, Chief Forsett, and Ashley. Thank you very much. I think this would be, it would be appropriate to ask council members to give them an opportunity to make any comment now that they'd like to. We could start down, Mr. Shada, if you'd like to. Okay? Natalie?
Thank you so much for delivering the hemostats and the cord clamps when we did the home birth of my grandson in my daughter's bathtub, and it's the only city council meeting that I've missed, November 17th. Thank you for helping us out.
I'll go last.
Yeah, I'm just always so incredibly impressed and proud of our Manitou Springs Fire Department, and here's just one more feather in your cap. So, thanks and congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you very much. Congratulations.
And I'd also like to add my congratulations, and really, my experience is that when residents think back of the city and they have the best memories they have of it, it's sometimes at the worst times of their lives, and the people they remember are the first responders, our firemen, our police, and those are the people they remember by name 30 years later. So, Chief, Ashley, and for those of you that's in the back, thank you very much for the commitment you make to this community and to other communities. We appreciate it very much. Thank you. We'll just pause for a minute here. If anyone would like to get to a first aid class, that'd be dandy, I guess. Thank you all for coming over and for your service. On to business. Item H1, ordinance number 0721RE2102, rezoning commercial to general residential, 16 Mayfair Avenue. Affinity Consulting Group applicant on behalf of Virginia Star Morgan Trust owner, consideration of Planning Commission recommendation and first reading of rezoning ordinance. Michelle, I believe you'll be. Good evening. Michelle, you have the floor.
Michelle, if you don't mind just turning on the center at the bottom, center thing, you'll turn green. You've got it.
Okay. And can I do this? Okay. First of all, I apologize for being a little more casual than usual, but I was actually out today and literally just drove in from out of town, so, which also means I'm doing this by memory. So excuse me if I stumble a little bit. This is a request for rezoning from commercial to general residential for 16 Mayfair. 16 Mayfair is a house that was built in the 1920s that sits behind the Chamber of Commerce. It's in an area that there are some other residential, single-family residential dwellings. And you all have seen two other ones in the last couple of years that were in the same situation where they had, for some reason, been zoned commercial many, many years ago, but they had longstanding residential use. And we don't allow standalone residential as a use by right in the commercial zone. And so for them to do anything like put an addition on or put an additional unit in or anything like that, then they need to rezone into an appropriate zone. This owner is planning to do an addition onto her house. The house is owned by a conglomeration of family members. It's been in the same family since it was built. And so she is graciously and very cooperatively going through the processes to get her zoning correct, will be replating the property because it's also made up of sundry pieces and parts. Part of that will be, will also get Mayfair within right of way as opposed to going across private property. So a lot of, lot of good things happening. This was recommended unanimously by Planning Commission for approval. We initially had one neighbor that expressed support and one that didn't really express opposition but had some questions. That was at the first meeting. I had addressed those questions with that neighbor, and she never participated again or attended the final meeting, so I'm assuming that she was satisfied. And so I'm willing to answer questions if I can, and the recommendation is to approve as recommended by Planning Commission.
Okay. And do we also have anyone here representing the applicant tonight?
I don't see them here tonight, and that may be because we've transitioned over to the in-person meetings, and frankly, I didn't realize it until pretty late in the process here, just a few days. And I'm not sure, I don't think, I don't remember notifying them that we had transitioned to this in-person as opposed to online.
Okay. I'd ask the city clerk if you've had any communication with an applicant. Okay, all right, so.
So I can let them know for sure for the public hearing if you choose to pass it on first reading.
So I guess at this point, if council members have questions for Michelle, this would be a good time. Councilor Chandler, please.
So I don't have any problem with this property changing from commercial to residential. My concern is the designation, the designation is high-density residential. That, that concerns me. I walk this area almost every day. I've seen that they've replatted it, and there are a total of six lots. And if the homeowner is just doing an addition on the existing property, why would this need to be a high-density versus a low-density residential designation?
Well, it's not a high-density residential, it's general residential.
I thought I saw in the packet that it was going to be.
It shouldn't have been.
Okay.
It should be going from commercial to general residential, which is consistent with the other rezonings that we've done in that area.
I just thought I saw high-density, maybe, maybe it was in the memorandum and it just was a, so, okay. So this will just be going from a commercial to a general?
Yes.
Okay. And the, do you know, have any, do you have any information on the addition to the?
It's, it's modest, but I can't tell you off the top of my head.
I'm just concerned that that's an area where there are a tremendous number of some of the most spectacular heritage old-growth trees and wildlife habitat in that little area there. So I was just concerned, just curious as to what they were planning.
I can't tell you off the top of my head whether there are any trees or, I mean, there may be some vegetation, but it's to the, if I remember correctly, it's to the northern part of the existing house, kind of, kind of the uphill side of the existing house. So not as close to the tree.
And I just have one more question. Those six separate lots, are they going to be replatted into one lot?
They're going to be replatted. She's requested three lots to reduce, you know, from the six. And we're, we're working on that right now to make sure that those are placed appropriately and everything. Interestingly, the commercial zone would allow up to, if, if we allowed standalone residence, it would allow up to 15 units an acre. The general residential zone allows up to 10. And this is considerably less number of lots that she's asking for than, you know, would be allowed. So it's, it's not coming up to, you know, 100% of possible density.
I see. Thank you so much, Michelle. That's all I have.
You're welcome.
I do want to mention, you're right, in section one, it says described from commercial to high-density residential.
Is that in the?
In the ordinance, so we'll just need to change the ordinance.
I'm sorry, yeah, that was a typo. I missed it. No, thank you. I'm glad you brought it up.
Do we have other comments or questions from council? Would seem to be relatively clear-cut. I guess we're at a point where we could entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
It should be subject to the change to the ordinance to make sure it's general residential. Just to be clear.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'll second that, that it be going from commercial to general residential.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? If not, let's vote all in favor, say aye, and raise your hand.
Aye.
Great, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay. Item two, appointment of city council liaison positions vacated by Susan Wolbrook's resignation. I believe that created two vacancies, one for the parking board and one for the metro board also. Natalie, I understand that you attended the, I believe it was the metro board last week. Do you have some ideas?
I attended the TPB last week, and then I'm, I'm planning to attend the metro next week.
Okay. Maybe if I could cut to the quick and ask if you would accept liaison positions on those two?
I would accept, I believe.
You would accept those? Not to cut anyone else off, if there's anyone on city council who would like to be a liaison person, the parking board or the metro board, raise your hand or speak up. If not, looks like we have one volunteer for the job. If there's no objection, I'd entertain a motion.
I move we appoint city council liaison Natalie Johnson to the, city councillor Natalie Johnson to the city council liaison positions vacated by Susan Wolbrook's resignation.
I'll second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Raise aye.
Motion passes. Yep, motion passes unanimously. Okay, great. Thanks, Natalie. We appreciate you stepping up. Okay, item three, Manitou Springs masking mandate revisited. Okay. I think we've all probably gotten emails and comments from the public at large about the masks in the last couple of weeks, so I thought it'd be a good time to come back and revisit things. This is a pretty dynamic situation. Conditions changed quite a bit. For my, my own personal thought is that things have changed enough to where we should perhaps become a little more lenient with the mask regulations. I would personally favor being consistent with the other jurisdictions in the area. I think that would reduce a lot of confusion. I do think it would be important to leave our local businesses with the option of enforcing the masks on their own premises, so it's basically something like no shoes, no shirt, no mask, no service. We'd leave that up to the business and provide the safety net that the police would be able to intervene if needed. And I think our history has been that that's not been required very often. Having said that, I would like to open it up to council discussion. Thank you, Mr. Shada. Other comments? I think, Steve, I think you've beaten Nancy. So Steve, let's go with you.
Sure. Yeah, I think it's time to go with the general Colorado provisions. I think the, you know, the amount of vaccinations and the decline of hospitalization and so on is indicating the pandemic's on its way down, so I think we need to move with the general Colorado guidelines.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, I believe you're next.
Yeah, I agree with Councilor Bremner. I think that the data indicates that it's appropriate for us, and I know that our city is promoting, continuing to promote immunizations and bringing the van in, so I think that that's very positive. I just did want to confirm with either the police, who I see is here, or Jeff, that businesses can in fact call upon an enforcement thing if they do want to continue to enforce the mask mandate within their individual business. Do we need a separate ordinance for that, or do we have existing ordinances that will cover that?
Individual businesses. I forgot the program here. Yeah, individual businesses still have a right to set the conditions upon which people can come into their business, and if people violate that, it could be considered a trespass.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Further discussion, comments? All right, and I do see Leslie Lewis here from the chair. Leslie, do you want to make comment on this? You're, you're, okay. I think we all received an email from you and representing members of the chamber board and the bid and so forth. And I will mention, I, council has, all the council members have received a printed copy of comments from Tim Haas and from Lori Adams Miller, both advocating that we become less restrictive. I'd be happy to read those if anyone feels it's necessary, but since council has it, I don't know that it is. Okay. Well, it looks like we're kind of coalescing towards a decision here. Do we want to, any further discussion, or can we provide? I don't know we necessarily need a motion on this. I think we can simply provide direction. Mr. Parker, I'll ask you the best way to do this. Great, thank you. Okay. Mayor Protem?
I move that we align our mask mandate with the state's guidance.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have two seconds. Okay, great. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? No, okay, great. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Oh, good. Can we take our masks off now?
You know.
Didn't we just pass it?
That's the beauty of it, we can actually do something.
Well, yours isn't even really on anyway. It's just underneath your nose. I guess I could do that.
No, I.
But what's the difference?
I'm sorry, it kept sliding off. I had it on earlier. Okay, but if that's, yeah, I think we can all take our masks off now. I guess the stipulation is if you're fully immunized, you can take your mask off.
Well, that wasn't part of the motion.
It was, yeah. Your vaccine.
Oh, was it the suit, guys?
Yeah.
Do we have to say?
Think we're all a little bit giddy to get the masks off. Okay. Let's go on to item H4, notice of the appointment of Alan Delwich to the Manitou Springs Urban Renewal Authority. And Alan had sent me an email earlier today. He had planned to be here. He's probably had a perfect attendance record throughout COVID and prior to that for council meetings, except for tonight. He's helping his niece move, so he begged off for that reason, but he is interested. So I think we all had a chance to review his materials in the packet. Do we have any questions, discussion? If not, how about a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to appoint Alan Delwich to the Manitou Springs Urban Renewal Authority.
Thank you.
Second.
We've seconded by Natalie Johnson. Any further discussion? Nope? All in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, and item H5, discussion on the cog car update. All right. Karen, because you're going to present initially.
I am.
Karen, you have the floor.
I'm just going to give Judy one moment here to bring up the presentation. Thank you, Judy. So we're here this evening to provide a presentation on utilization of the city's cog railway cars. And our purpose here is to update you on work group activity over the last couple of years. And I'll just briefly introduce our work group. It started out as a larger group a couple of years ago, but I've been working with Nancy Fortune, Councilmember Fortune, Councilmember Johnson, and Mike Mayo, and Doug Edmondson as a citizen here to chime in this evening as well. So we want to provide an update on recent activity and then obtain council guidance on a general approach for moving forward with the two cog cars. The city has two cars. They're 10 by 60 feet long. They're being stored at GE Johnson's Construction Yard, and they've been there for two years for free. We are under a deadline to make a decision on where they should go. There is some cost involved in moving the cars. So we'd like direction on whether the city should keep both cars, whether the city should keep one car and relinquish the other, or relinquish both cars. So first, just a brief timeline. After the city's founding in 1872, the Manitou and Pike's Peak Railway was incorporated 16 years later. Construction on the railway began in 1889. And in 1926, Spencer Penrose, the owner of the Broadmoor Hotel, purchased the cog railway. In 1939, Mr. Penrose's foundation, El Pomer, assumed ownership of the cars. And in 2011, Philip Anchutz purchased the Broadmoor as well as the cog railway. That's the very high-level timeline. There's some other ownership events in between those. But our group just wanted to acknowledge this 125-year history of the cog in our community. But our group just wanted to acknowledge this 125-year history of the cog in our community and the value of the cars as an historic artifact representing that time period. So I'd like to introduce Doug Edmondson to my right, who probably most of you know Doug. He can provide a bit of a citizen perspective on the cog. He is a train enthusiast, has worked to reuse, plan for reuse of trains in Victor, the Victor Railroad, and was involved in community discussions starting two years ago about reuse of the cars. And so he'll just share some of his perspective.
Well, thank you, Karen. My wife texted me and told me to use my outside voice since the audio seems to be pretty bad at home, so I'd be more than glad to do that for you this evening. Yes, I've been involved in a lot of train projects in my life. One of those was the Victor Interurban Railway. We made every effort we could to possibly rebuild what was the old trolley line in the Victor-Cripple Creek area. Unfortunately, it just wasn't really economically feasible, but in doing so, we were able to move a trolley from the Cripple Creek area into the downtown area of Victor, and now it's become very iconic and a center of their tourist activities, local events, so on and so forth. So it's a really fine example, when you can take a car and just do a static display, and it can be an enhancer to public events and draw into a community. Personally, as a rail enthusiast, I can guarantee you that every time I go through an old city center, I look for static displays such as engines, cars, trolley systems, so on and so forth. And I have a tendency to stay and spend my dollar in a community that seems to respect its history and takes a little extra time and a little extra money to preserve their old buildings, preserve their railway buildings, and have static displays of old cars, whether they be operating in the area or not. This fall, I'm going to be taking a trip out to California with my wife, and we will specifically be going to a railroad where we will stay and spend our dollar in that town, ride the train, and have some fun. Been asked to weigh in on this subject as a local resident. I can say with a whole heart that I have the same mixed feelings as a lot of people do. I usually break out a bag of curses when I see a lot of heavy traffic in town, whether it be associated with the cog or not, or the incliners or not. But over the years, it has been a joy to see people come to town, ride the cog railway, spend their dollars here, and help us. And then in the middle of winter, watch them roll up the sidewalks and Manitou close down for the year. That has changed dramatically in my life. When I was a young man, you know, Manitou Springs basically closed up for six months out of the year. And mainly, all the hotels would close, a lot of the businesses would, so on and so forth. But however, I can appreciate the dynamic that we're dealing with here. I know that there's a budget to do something with these cars. There are two of them, and as we all know, real estate is at a premium in Manitou Springs as we're facing a deadline. I think some money could be spent to move these cars to the city shop areas where they could be stored. And then, when a decision has really been made for a static display, one of these cars, which I think would be a very wise decision, that the other one could potentially be sold to help finance that project. You know, I think too, when it comes to the display of this car, it can supersede the old static display as we see downtown. It can be kind of, a call to artists could be put out, and of course, you know, the community engagement process that Manitou is so well-known for. I, my personal plug-in with the cog railway is my family has ridden it for years. It's part of our family reunion. Every year we get together, we rode it just a couple of months before it closed, and I was privileged to ride the second train up to the top of the peak just this last month. And it's just the same old cog railway. It's the same old song and dance. We were coming down the hill, started going too fast. It automatically shut down because it has its governor inside of it, so you can't go any faster than you could before either way. Does anybody have any questions for me? Julie?
Who would buy it? Well, how do you sell something like this?
You know, you just put it out there. I think you'd probably be surprised if you put one of those cars out there for sale on an open market. I've seen some really odd things in my day. Again, I went to a rail fair in the early 90s. They actually shipped trains from across the seas, from Japan, from the UK, just to operate them so people could see them. So you never know. I know that with the Koch brothers, I think it was one of the Koch brothers, unfortunately, bought Buckskin Joe's, and now it's just an empty field. I was kind of sad that was allowed to happen.
And my other question is, do you know how much will the lease be once our current term is up, if the cars stay in the warehouse or wherever they're being stored at the moment?
I am not privy to if that's even an option. No one's, I was just told that they're being stored by GE Johnson for a period of time, and that at the end of that period of time, they would rather see them go.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question. Do we have an alternate place to store them at this point? It sounds like we don't at this time. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Karen, I think you probably have some more slides to walk through with us.
I do, I do.
Okay, thanks, thank you, Mr. Edmondson.
Yeah, so a little bit more background to share with you, to guide your decision-making. Some background and facts. In 2019 was when the city was offered the choice of cars and artifacts, and council voted to retain three cars and artifacts such as a water tank and some other pieces. The city ended up, Widener Group, associated with the Switchback Stadium, purchased one car for a $10,000 donation, and so the city retained two, moved them to GE Johnson. And so between moving costs, we've spent $7,300 to date on the cars. In April of that year, council convened this work group to research options for the cars, and subsequently provided briefing to council. A webpage was posted to solicit ideas and concepts. Community meeting was hosted in July. And then some additional briefings were provided to council, and council subsequently directed staff to prepare a budget for movement and placement of the cars in 2020. And so our group estimated that over 200 hours have been invested in the project to date. So in 2020, planning came to a bit of a standstill between new council, but primarily due to COVID-19, and our decrease in meetings and community engagement. So the $95,000 budget that was allocated was actually rolled over to this year. And so early this year, I was assigned to the Work with the Work group, which has been bringing me up to speed on all of the activities of the last few years. We posted a request for bids for a project manager to oversee the process, but then we really decided we needed more clear direction from you in order to move forward more specifically and do more specific planning related to movement and ultimate use. In April, just this past April, our group visited Woodland Park, and we met with several city officials and visited their cog car, which is located just south of the downtown. We really enjoyed that. It's very visible. You see Pike's Peak in the background, and they're really delighted with the function of their car, which is basically as an artifact. It's not occupied, but something for people to come and see, look at, and occasionally open for special events. So I did mention the community engagement. We did solicit ideas through a webpage, hosted a community meeting, and had three council briefings. And basically, the questions that were asked are where should the cars be located, and how could they be reused? And so we've got lots of ideas from that process for using the car at both a city site, a public site, or as a private use, and using the car either as an artifact, as a display piece, or as an occupied building. And really, two recommendations emerged from that discussion, and we determined that over 100 people weighed in on this topic. So it really is a creative opportunity that elicited input and ideas from our community. And so I'll jump into just sharing the top two recommendations, which are very different. And the first is to utilize the car as a Western Gateway Artistic Static Display, so really as an artifact. And Higginbotham Flats, or at least a portion of that site, the portion nearest the roadway, would be a potential site for this. And so advantages are that it would function as both art and historic artifact, and we think have a real placemaking effect with high-impact visibility from the street, but also function on the site to draw people to that location. The work group reached out to Concrete Couch, which developed a proposal for site improvements to really highlight the gateway feature, so you can see that image there. So the advantage here is that this would be a low-cost effort, and no building permit would be required for this type of artifact use. It also offers some marketing opportunities and has the support of our Chamber of Commerce. The site would retain flexibility for some other uses. It's an example of recycling. And then finally, we included the concept of a rail park with an historic theme that was developed by Mike, and so that's included in your packet. And so that adds a few other site improvements to address public needs. The other top recommendation is to use the car as an occupied structure. And so a potential site for this would be Hiawatha Gardens, our multimodal transportation hub. Advantages to this are that it would have appeal, we think, for both visitors and local residents. Being adjacent to the city park and at the mobility hub would really complement the use, we think. Could be a potential public-private partnership, similar to Story Coffee at Acacia Park in downtown Colorado Springs. Could also support some other uses, such as an office or museum, a museum hub, and is an opportunity of creative use of this asset to, I think, create an interesting experience for visitors. Some challenges with this option are the need to more clearly define ongoing maintenance of a train. We'd probably reach out to Doug for some assistance with that, as well as the cog. It would require a building permit if it's occupied, so we'd need to address ADA requirements and floodplain requirements and such. Need for utilities. We would need to understand the city's role in a public-private partnership. And the planning for this site is not complete yet, so we could certainly participate in that process. It would be an appropriate time to do so. Temporary storage would also be needed for this option in the interim. And then some additional considerations for you to consider. We do have a $95,000 budget, which is a real advantage to be used for moving, project management, and some site improvements. We've estimated the Higginbotham Flats gateway display to cost about $50,000. And then we wanted to share some other very impactful examples of art and artifacts in our region and state. So there's the Woodland Park car for you to see. It is slightly smaller than ours. And that cost is $12,500, so pretty minimal cost. The only improvement are stairs and solar lighting. In Widener Field, there is a very impressive sculpture that costs $4 million. And then Denver's Big Blue Bear, which is a six-story high bear peering into an office, is $5 million. So there's really some neat things that communities can do. So we need to consider the storage timeline and need for possible temporary storage. And then, again, just referring to Woodland Park and their success with their cog car. So that's most of the information I have to share. I hope that's helpful. We just wanted to lay out the different courses of action for you to consider. And again, we're seeking general guidance from you, and we expect that we would do additional research and then come back with you with updates for more detailed guidance as we proceed it. So a first course of action would be implementing the Gateway Artistic Static Display. That is budgeted, would require some site costs that we could cover through that. We have project management assistance for the movement, the moving part. It's been vetted through community engagement. It's supported in the post-plan, which supports a gateway feature at that site, and would still allow for other uses at the site, such as emergency uses as needed. The challenge with the site is details to be worked out with the land use of the site. It is a shared ownership, would save the flats, and there's currently no master plan for use of the site. So that would need to be worked out in the interim. For the Hiawatha Gardens, occupied cog car concept advantages are that it's a real placemaking feature, a destination. Timing is right to participate in more detailed discussions about planning, and it's been supported by community engagement. Challenges are complete costs, for instance, meeting building permit requirements are yet to be determined, and temporary storage would be required. Another course of action is to continue to task the group with looking at other sites for two cars. Pros to that are that we've got ideas, lots of ideas. Challenges are that, as you can tell, sites are limited. And then a fourth option would be to keep one car, be committed to finding a location and reuse for that car, but to relinquish the other car, as Doug mentioned. So those assets could be applied towards the car that we maintained. Challenges to that, or disadvantages, would be a lost opportunity. And then finally, there's the option of relinquishing both cars. We don't really see any pros or advantages to that option, and do think that that would be a significant lost opportunity to the community. And then finally is the option, or the course of action, of evaluating temporary storage. We have some ideas for this. They've not been thoroughly vetted, but I think that we're very committed to finding a site, and we could certainly do that if it was needed. So I know that's a lot of information. Hopefully, it's helpful and happy to respond to questions or comments you may have.
I was just wondering if Mr. Mayo wanted to make comments before we get into the question phase. So, Mr. Mayo, if you could make your remarks, and then we'll open up to council's questions for the three of you.
I'm Michael Mayo. I'm a resident of Manitou Springs. I reside at 3 Dudley Road.
I reside at 3 Dudley Road. I am the president of the Manitou Springs Heritage Center. And I think the city has a wonderful opportunity to establish a marquee park at Higginbotham Flats. You know, we have rail cars here that date back to about 1963. They're roughly 60 years old. They were Swiss locomotive works, cars that were constructed in Switzerland. And as Karen mentioned, the cars were donated by the COG Railway to the city for final disposition and hopefully a use in a public park. I've been involved with the task force process for close to two years now. And it seems to me that the most viable solution is not only preserve the cars as historical artifacts, but also place them on Higginbotham Flats. As many of you don't realize, Higginbotham Flats has historical ties to the COG Railway. In 1888, Higginbotham Flats was subdivided by Major John Holbert, who at that time was the first president of the COG Railway. So we already have established historical ties with the COG Railway. It's a wonderful opportunity, as I mentioned, to preserve these cars and to display them on US 24 at Higginbotham Flats. As I saw in Woodland Park, and as was explained by our guide on that day that we visited Woodland, the COG Railways have served as the purpose of drawing people off the highway to enjoy the park they have up in Woodland Park and to enjoy the views from that park. We could do the same. But in addition to offering views of the mountains, we can also offer views at Higginbotham Flats of the downtown district. I go, I walk Higginbotham Flats on a frequent basis, and there's nothing up there drawing the people off the highway to view our town and to even think about visiting Manitou Springs. So, you know, in addition to its beautiful views, the park has, can offer this wonderful centerpiece in the way of a rail car. We have presently two rail cars. Each occupy a space of 10 by 60. The total space on the brownfield portion of Higginbotham is over 17,000 feet. I understand that some members of council have entertained the thought of putting, locating a helipad up there, which occupies another 10,000 square feet. We still have several thousand feet that would allow for the, for the display of the rail car, or at least one of the rail cars. So I mean, you know, you've got a wonderful opportunity here. We've got the historical ties. And, you know, please, you know, I beg this council to preserve the cars and to seriously consider Higginbotham Flats as a marquee park for the city of Manitou Springs.